Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of May 22, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez. Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. We have the pleasure tonight of having Sergeant Elizabeth Avila from the U.S. Federal Chaplains Agency to offer the invocation. We now have a new office here of the U.S. Chaplains Branch, and we're very glad to have you. And then, following the invocation, Councilmember Arias will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this wonderful city that you have given us, my Lord. Thank you for giving us, Father God, just the strength to be here today, my Lord. I pray that every decision that is made, Father God, is to honor you, my Jesus. Thank you for so much, Father, for everything that we are blessed with just to even have, Father God, the moment to stand here strong, Father. We pray right now for our military. We pray for our Sheriff Department. We pray, Father, for our doctors. Father, we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, Lord, for our police department. We pray, Father God, for every member that is here to make a decision, my Lord. We pray that you give them the wisdom, Father. We pray for everybody here that is just anointed with you, my Lord. We pray, Father God, we thank you so much for this opportunity. We also are very grateful and thankful for allowing us to be here as a United States Federal Chaplain Agency, Lord, to be able to be a blessing to this community, Father. We pray for every decision, Lord, that is made, my Lord. Thank you so much, my Lord. We pray for everyone, Lord, that is just, Father God, able to be, Father, anointed in this moment here in your presence. We pray in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Thanks. Thank you, Sergeant. Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We'd request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts a meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
In keeping with council's new resolution, public statements are now received at different times, depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at a later time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive, and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received eight public speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first three public speakers will be Sharon Terrell, Bill Sandrini, and Valeria.
Sharon, welcome. Ms. Terrell. And just a reminder to all of you, if you adjust the mic so that we can hear you, please.
Okay. Hello, my name is Sharon Terrell. And last week you were not open, but the following Wednesday you were. And I was here to address my car being towed after it was stolen and taken to a facility that the Kern County Sheriff's Department picked, and them charging me almost $600 to go two miles. You said that you would look into this. I haven't heard anything. You are the ones that called these people to come and pick up our cars. And in return, they use that to intimidate us, overcharge, and keep our facility if we can't get the car out. So we become a victim twice, once from the car being stolen and the other once it's towed. Now, they say that you set the prices, that they don't have anything to do with this, that the Kern County Sheriff's Department sets the tow price. Where's that listed? Do you have that? Is there such a thing available that I can see? Where's the list that you can charge that much to go two miles? Anybody look into it? Is anybody interested in looking into that? Because they're getting away with this. You know, I looked at one, the most popular cars. I have a Hyundai. There was a Kia right next to mine. And the tow lady told me, she says, "The lady came in to get her car. She was crying because she couldn't." There was a car seat in the back. That woman could not get her car out. Can't get your car out, you can't get the car seat. Therefore, she couldn't even take her baby anywhere.
Ms. Terrell, thank you for speaking. Your time is up, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Terrell, thank you so much for coming back and bringing your comments to the council. I believe we had made a referral to staff to look into this. Mr. Clegg, do you have an update for us? I know it's a non-agendized item. I want to be careful that we don't overstep, but if you can just briefly provide an update.
Yeah, I think, Vice Mayor, our finance department did take a look at this issue. And as reported at the last meeting, the baseline assumption we've demonstrated is accurate that this did not occur within city jurisdiction. This is a county issue. I've been, received a report from staff that they had reached out to the constituent and shared this fact, that this is a county issue, and that we've tried to provide the resources for where to address this at the county level because it's not a city issue.
Great, thank you. And if we can receive your contact information, I'm not sure if it's on the card, your phone number. Ms. Terrell, I will personally call you tomorrow so that we can work through who the appropriate person is at the county to get this issue addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Terrell. Next speaker, please.
Bill Sandrini, followed by Valeria, followed by Carmen Enriquez.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Bill Sandrini. And my sister and I own a small shopping center called Plaza on Callaway at 1400 Callaway Drive. Several small businesses in there. And starting in, I'm going to say the exact month, December, one of our tenants was flying a couple of the banners out in front. I think they call them feather banners. And code enforcement comes by and says, you know, we get a letter from them, "This is illegal. You can't do this." Okay. Why is it illegal? Is there something else we can do? No, you can't do it. It's illegal. You can't have feather banners. You look all over this town, there's feather banners all over the place. I saw them on H Street coming in. What are most of them? Most of them are for small businesses that can't afford to go out and have television advertising, other kinds of advertising and stuff like that. So let a little while go by, put them back up. A month or two goes by, come by again. Hey, you've got to take these down. Look on the corner over there. Ener's has some up, the 7-Eleven has some up. You go all over. You have big businesses and you have small businesses that have them all over this town. What it's hurting is the small businesses, but it also hurts the property owners that if their small businesses can't advertise in a way like that and get people in, it not only hurts that, he goes out of business. Then the property owner has a vacancy that he has to try to fill. You know, so whatever that law is or whatever, it needs to really be looked at because it is against the small businesses in this town.
Thank you, Mr. Sandrini. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I met with Mr. Sandrini this morning. And Mr. Boyle, you can connect with me tomorrow, and we can talk about this a little bit and see if there's solutions and direction. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Valeria, followed by Carmen Enriquez, followed by Kev.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Afternoon. Today marks one week since the 76th year anniversary of the Nakba, which translates to the catastrophe. The Nakba refers to the ethnic cleansing and mass displacement of the Palestinian people carried out by the State of Israel in 1948. Israeli violence against Palestinians both predates this event and continues to be carried out today. Last time I came and spoke at this meeting, I was rebuttled. And although I know this response was made in bad faith, given the fact that I and others, primarily brown people, were compared to the KKK, I would still like to respond in case it brought up questions for anyone who is sincerely torn on this matter. This rebuttal conflated the recorded amount of deaths to be primarily Hamas. Clearly, it is not, given that 15,000, over 15,000 of those recorded deaths are literal children. The masks that I wear are to protect myself and my loved ones from disease, not to mask myself like the KKK. Especially when COVID is still actively killing Americans. It has killed over 20,000 Americans since the start of this year alone, according to our World in Numbers. I also wear it in solidarity with my immunocompromised folk who are facing mask ban bills in North Carolina, despite the fact that they need these to live their day-to-day life. A letter was shared from a Palestinian saying that our goal is not sincere because if it was, we would be targeting Hamas. I wonder how deep our last speaker that rebuttled me had to search to find this testimony or if it's even credible, given that I've seen many photos and videos of children in Gaza expressing solidarity with the students who are making encampments for Palestinians. So I just wanted to respond to that. Free Palestine, you guys still haven't done anything. Glory to our martyrs.
Next speaker, please.
Carmen Enriquez, followed by Kev, followed by Rocky Escobedo.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hello. I'm here to urge a thorough investigation into Patty Gray's family member, Christian Gray, the person who was harassing and assaulting people in front of City Hall. Despite heavy police presence, he was allowed to assault the public. Assault the public. Two cops acknowledged what he was doing and chose not to intervene. It is imperative that thorough measures be taken to address this issue and ensure all individuals are held accountable for their actions, regardless of their affiliations or connections. But I'm guessing you're all willing to look the other way because we all know that in this city, in this county, what happens when you know somebody? Like the district attorney Cynthia Zimmer, who personally called Sheriff Youngblood because her nephew, the Kern County Supervisor Zach Scrivner, was allegedly brandishing a gun after allegedly sexually assaulting his daughter and allegedly getting stabbed by his son. The treatment that he got compared to what an average citizen would have gotten is laced with so much privilege that his whereabouts are still a mystery. So much of a mystery that his ex-wife cannot even serve the restraining order to protect herself and her children from this alleged predator. Only if we all had the aunt like Cynthia Zimmer, just think about the lives that could have been spared if the DA had intervened during instances of mental health crises for the community. Speaking of mental health, last meeting, there was a senile man trying to equate mask-wearing to the KKK. This incident serves as a stark reminder of the urgent need for mental health services and education in our community. Rather than allocating funds towards arming cops and deploying biased AI programs that disproportionately target marginalized groups, we should prioritize investments in mental health resources and education. If we invest in education, the City Council wouldn't need to have to pass agenda items that send substantial funds towards unnecessary grammar subscriptions for themselves. We can alleviate the burden on taxpayers who currently foot the bill for grammar subscriptions when there are free grammar tools readily available on every computer and every smartphone. Free Palestine, ceasefire now.
Next speaker, please.
Kev, followed by Rocky Escobedo, followed by Ian Journey.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hello again, council. As you stare inhumanly at me today, I want you to remember this as you leave, that when you pull into your home, I want you to get curious about what it would look like if your home personally had been bombed before you had arrived. What would it look like pulling your family out of that rubble or pulling your pet out of that? Or maybe you'll forget to think about that one. So maybe when you take a shower in a failing attempt to wash away your sins, that that warm water hitting your skin may feel like blood flowing down it. And question to yourself if that's really how it would feel because you wouldn't know. You would never know that. But the families in Gaza would. And to date, over 40,000 people are dead. Millions have their homes destroyed and are displaced. Most of them innocent women and children. And now they're trapped. But you've never cared about statistics or events. Maybe you've never seen the images from Gaza. Because maybe you don't even care about the kids. Because how is it that this council elected an alleged gun-owning essential child rapist as the supervisor? Because it's not that hard to determine a judge of character or a person's character, especially if they're that bad. However, it could just show how horrible this city council is because either you're so negligent that you could let something like that slip or that this city council will associate with predators. I don't know. What do you think, Andre? Do you think that this city government should allege, should associate with child predators? Karen Go? Anyone else? I wouldn't want my city government to be filled with people who associate or are child predators, who are willing to do that stuff to kids. That's why I don't stand for many of your actions because you all make decisions that aren't for a good, happy community. Free Palestine.
Next speaker, please.
Rocky Escobedo, followed by Ian Journey, followed by Justin Pfeffer.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Rocky Escobedo. I'm the owner of Northwest Barber Shop here in Rosedale. And we're speaking about the banners and the flags and stuff like that. Mr. Smith, you came to talk to us earlier in the morning. This is great. So the issue with me, I've been the owner for about 12 years now and never had no problems with the flags up there or anything like that. But since it happened, I'm thinking maybe 40% of my business is, you know, it's not there where it was. You know what I mean? So I see a lot more, like we were talking about earlier, that it's everywhere. You know what I mean? So the city and the county is different. I get that part, but, you know, so my shop is here. Across the way, that's the county. So I'm like, okay. But what about the other parts of the city? And there's everywhere, you know what I mean? So I took pictures, know where it's at and stuff like that. So, I mean, you know, why it can't be across the board? Or something can happen, you know what I mean? So I can have the flags out there, you know what I mean? And that's a huge, big thing for me, you know what I mean? You know, as a Marine vet, you know, I have discounts for veterans and stuff like that. But with them not seeing my shop without the flags, I can't help them or a lot of people that come in for me. So that's pretty much where I'm going to... That's the problem for me.
Thank you, Mr. Escobedo. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Rocky, for coming and speaking with us. And Mr. Sandrini, I really appreciate it. Appreciate that you reached out to us. Bakersfield is a, quote, "business-friendly city." I'm a small business owner myself. I understand what it takes to, first of all, open a business, manage a business, make a profit on a business, and then be able to send a check to the state of California and the federal government and the City of Bakersfield. So it's the small businesses that are the foundation of this city, and we appreciate you. So I would echo Councilmember Smith's request, Mr. Clegg, that we meet with Mr. Sandrini as a landlord and with Rocky. Rocky, I'm sorry, I'm not getting your last name correctly. So I'm not showing you disrespect there. To meet with them and see if we can come up with a solution because clearly we have a double standard with businesses in this town. We have inconsistency with code enforcement where some say, oh, no, it's okay. Others say it's not okay. These are the things that need to be flushed out. And when a gentleman's standing here who's a hard worker, trying to earn a living for his family and losing 40% of his business over an issue like this, that's not a good thing for our city. Our business owners need to be able to be profitable. So I would really appreciate that meeting and then if you could get back to me too on that. So we hope we can help you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Escobedo and Mr. Sandrini, thank you so much for being here today. I hope that we can, through Councilmember Smith, find some solutions to your particular problem. But I think this issue raises a larger question for the council related to our sign ordinance. I think that there are issues related to the sign ordinance that may need to be revisited. And so I'd like to refer that to planning and development. I think, you know, we could have a long conversation about the flags and the fairy flags and, you know, some of the pros and cons to those things. There are some property owners who are good stewards or others who go way overboard and really have, you know, gone across the line when it comes to our ordinance on the books. But the other piece, I think, is related to code enforcement. And Councilmember Gray pointed it out. I don't necessarily believe that it's a double standard. I just think that our policy or practice of being complaint-driven has had the effect of some feeling of being a double standard. Whereas some folks may not have received a complaint, other properties have. So I think we need to also, in the same time that we talk about a policy, we need to talk about the practice that we're going to employ in the future because I don't think the complaint-driven process for a city our size is going to suffice. I think that we're going to look towards... I think we need to have a conversation with the council of what the future enforcement really will look like. So thank you again.
Next speaker, please.
Ian Journey, followed by Justin Pfeffer, followed by Irvin Pike.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
My name is Ian Journey. I'm a citizen of Bakersfield. And I'm here today in representing Team Action Dad. At Team Action Dad, we are dedicated to empowering fathers to become the best versions of themselves, both as individuals and as loving, involved parents. Our mission is to provide a supportive and dynamic community where dads can thrive, grow, and create lasting memories with their children. And my son Rory would like to make a quick statement. And really, we're here representing bicycle enthusiasts and looking to get a bicycle track or bicycle infrastructure built within the city. And I will come to the next city council with a more involved presentation, but just wanted to come here with my kid today. And if you wanted to make a statement.
Hi, I'm Rory Journey. I'm nine years old. And when I'm at home, I feel like I need more things to do. So I want a pump track.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Journey. Thank you, Mr. Rory Journey. Next speaker, please. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Mr. Clegg, please get Rory a pump track, will you? Come on, let's get it done. Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm pretty much here to just echo what was just said. We just need more infrastructure and more things in our community to support our youth. And not only that, but the people who need to commute in this town that can't afford cars and car insurance and registration and all those things. And we just need more to keep the public safe. As I'm sure you all know, we have a very high number of pedestrian and cycling deaths and accidents in this town. And it's just something that we need here. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Irvin Pike, followed by Max Bunting, followed by Olivia Snyder.
Good afternoon. I'm Irvin. I would like to thank our Mayor Go, council members, and the Bakersfield Police Officers for serving our city. I do appreciate it. Since October 7, 2023, the day that Hamas broke the existing ceasefire that it had with Israel, where they had raped, killed, tortured, mutilated, and kidnapped innocent men, women, and children, there has been a group of our Bakersfield neighbors that have come to our Bakersfield City Council meetings to demand that our local city council put a proclamation for a ceasefire to prevent Israel from defending herself. They have called this a genocide. Definition of a genocide is the deliberate killing of people from a particular nation or ethnic group with the aim of destroying that nation or group. Our Bakersfield neighbors have it wrong, dead wrong. A genocide is what Hamas's charter states blatantly for the total destruction of Israel and Jews. If Israel wanted to genocide the Gazan civilians after Hamas broke the ceasefire that was in place, why would they send text messages, phone calls, and leaflets to all the civilians in Gaza and the residents to move to a safe place out of harm's way as they would fight a war against Hamas each time? Spoiler alert, the 40,000 they just said, the 35,000 they have been saying in the newspaper. The United Nations Office for the Coordination of Humanitarian Affairs on May 8, that's here a few weeks ago, said that that 35,000 was not a correct number. It has been coming from Hamas, that it was half that much, and that at least over half of that amount is fighters for Hamas. As far as I'm concerned, one child killed is too many and that we need to condemn Hamas atrocities. Hamas must surrender to save innocent lives in Gaza. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Max Bunting, followed by Olivia Snyder.
Welcome, please introduce yourself. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Max Bunting. I'm eleven years old. And I would like to be outside more and ride my bike. So I would like a pump track here in Bakersfield.
Thank you, Mr. Bunting. Next speaker, please.
Olivia Snyder, followed by Roman Matera.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi there, I'm Olivia Snyder, and I'm here in support of Ian Journey and the work that he's put in place for the pump track. It's a pretty cool idea, and it looks like there is an empty lot that has availability. And so he has a whole plan for it, and it's great. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Roman Matera, followed by Asia Redden.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, yes, I'm Roman Matera. To be honest, I didn't expect to get up here, given that I arrived a little bit late. I'll try to make my points concisely. I've told you before that I've been a resident here for, on and off, about twenty years. I'm twenty-five right now. I grew up on Six Morrison Street. I don't know if any of you know where that is by any chance. And, you know, like, my father would always take me to a nearby Cataldo's Pizza. It was one of our favorite restaurants that we used to get together. Sadly, he's no longer with us, but, you know, I wanted to relay that. The reason I bring all this up is because my home was actually demolished in order to build the West Side Parkway. I believe I have the highway right. The suburb it was in is completely gone. And I can't even look at it anymore on Google Maps because the map data just redirects to the highway. The Cataldo's Pizza has since been demolished. And even the liquor store that I used to go to as a kid has, I mean, it's still operating. It's called the Stockdale Liquor Store, but as a kid, we used to just call it Chris's because that was the name of the owner. But operating so close to a freeway overpass and, you know, having a lot of its, the nearby residential area, like, not, well, you know, being demolished, combined with the fact that the traffic light there still hasn't been fixed, and there are concrete barriers that have stood for months have introduced significant challenges to that area. I'm talking to express, well, I mean, it hurts, of course, to know that my home was destroyed. But more than that, I just want to use this as a story or as a, I guess, a cautionary thing that every time you make some decision to build a highway or to build something, I'd, like, I would say that it's very important that it's worthwhile, and it keeps in mind the local community, and it doesn't hurt them.
Thank you, Mr. Matera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ter, thank you so much for your comments and for sharing something that's so personal to you. I'm sorry to hear about the loss of your father. I, too, have lost my dad, and I know the pain that is still there. And I sympathize with you. And, you know, I will say, thank you for bringing up the comments related to the demolition of your home. That was, I think, a sad part of our city's history and its development. And I'm sorry that that had happened. I think it is important, and it does call to mind that sometimes when we call these projects improvement projects, it's not necessarily an improvement for the neighborhood. And I think your experience really articulates that well. So thank you so much for bringing this so public, your personal story to the table. I'd like to make a referral, though, that we address the issues at Reel and Stockdale related to the traffic lights. I believe that's the intersection you're referring to. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Aisha Redden.
Come on, all the way up here and... Welcome.
Can you hear me? Because I really need to hear. My name is Aisha Redden. And me and my dog were traveling to Las Vegas to see my daughter. And we had an issue on Amtrak, and they put me and my dog in jail. I did nothing. So I'm in a transit process where I need to get home and be able to call my family. So I've been reaching out to nonprofit organizations, and various businesses that are available because I don't know anyone here. However, ninety-seven percent of the businesses and the nonprofit organizations in Bakersfield have no access to you if you're homeless. They have, I have literally had humans eat my dog food. Like, they stole my dog of everything. Like, I'm literally, like, packing because the administrators have been saying that they're going to give me a ticket since last Friday. I went to them, and they said, come Monday. I gave my name and this went excuse after excuse. They put me into a mercy house. And it was chaotic. I'm like, I'm running all over the place looking for staff, and the ministers were there. I'm like, you know what? I know this isn't fair. This is nothing that a human can fix. This is going to take God, how chaotic the situation is. So now, even today, live right now, I have me and my dogs belong in a trash can in front of your office. I came to see the mayor last Friday. He was not in. His secretary was not in. The technician was like, well, let me go see if I take somebody out. I'm like, Jesus, Jesus. Because me and my dog, like, stand off in your lobby area because we're pushing buttons, and he's walking back and forth, like, what did you? We have...
Ms. Redden, your time is up, but our vice mayor would like to offer some comments. Go ahead.
I don't know how...
Ms. Redden, your time is up, but let's listen to the vice mayor.
Ms. Redden, I'm so sorry to hear about your experience. I think we all are. And certainly, we want to see what we can do to help you. I'm very thankful, actually, that you found your way here today to share with us your comments. I think it's remarkable, frankly, that you're here and we're able to hear directly from you what your lived experience is being, experiencing homelessness. We have our wonderful assistant city manager in the room, who is actually our lead in homelessness efforts. And I wouldn't ask him if I didn't think that he was, he would be ready, but I think he is. Mr. Valdez, if you would be willing to work with our constituent here and see what resources we might be able to connect her with this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Redden, if you just make your way to the lobby, Mr. Valdez will meet you there. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item Public Statements.
We'll now move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on Appointments Item 6 or Items Listed Under Consent Calendar Item 7, your time to speak is now. Each speaker is given a two-minute time limit, and each agenda item is limited to twenty minutes total. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on Consent Calendar Hearing Items 8A through B, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when the item is called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding Items Listed on Appointments Item 6 and Consent Calendar Item 7?
Mayor, we have received one speaker card on items listed on tonight's agenda.
And what, which item is that? Can you give me...
Item 7E.
Okay, before we get to 7E, we have no speakers on Appointment Item 6, so we'll take that. I'd like to clarify... Madam Clerk, would you read Appointment Item 6?
Appointments, one appointment to the north of the River Recreation and Parks District. Member to complete an unexpired term set to expire December 31st of 2025 to the north of the River Recreation Parks District.
I'd like to clarify the voting process for you. The council will vote electronically, and the city clerk will display and announce the results. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding the appointment.
Mayor Go, we've received two applications for appointment. One from Charles Howard and the second one from Stephen Rotgers. I'm opening the vote now. It appears Charles Howard received the most votes at four, and Rotgers received one vote.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Motion to appoint Mr. Howard to the North of the River Recreation and Parks District Board.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent and Councilmember Gray abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Howard, for your service. And now we'll hear public comment on Item 7E7. Mr. Matera.
Well, I'm really glad I got here in time and got to make my earlier public comment because this is actually a pretty easy follow-up from that. When I was, you know, like, when I found out the news about the Parkway and what it had done, you know, obviously, I mean, it was sad. But, you know, I could have accepted it a lot easier if I had known that it had been for a good cause. Now, I've looked at the map for the West Side Parkway. And I mean, I'm not like, I don't have the city zoning maps. I'm not exactly sure on all this stuff. But it looks as though the West Side Parkway was constructed mainly to facilitate a westward expansion of the city. And right now, I'm living on the west side of Bakersfield, and it's mostly single-family, very spread-out suburbs. It actually takes a while for us to find a nearby business or a place to eat. I mean, I live, a little bit ago, I was living on Bell Terrace, and there was maybe a ten, twenty-minute walk. Where I am now, it's, it would take me an hour to walk somewhere in order to get something to eat. And I suspect that's probably why the West Side Parkway was built, is because rather than addressing, like, you know, building the housing and the businesses in the places where people needed them, instead, we looked to build transportation and highways in order to get them to the center of the city. And it just so happened that my home was one of the casualties, so to speak, in that. Now, I'm speaking about this agenda item because I looked over the HTML, the link, and I saw where it was. I saw what it's approving. I think it's eighty-six, if I remember correctly, affordable housing units. And based off where it is, I think that this is an amazing thing that you guys are doing. I think this is exactly the kind of development that this city needs. And the only thing I would say is, please, do more of it and do it faster because I think the rest of the state is counting on us to build this housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. It's now time for the Consent Calendar Hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under Consent Calendar Hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it'll be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. And at this time, I'll open Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 8A through B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony only to remove the matter from consent calendar hearings. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearings? Seeing none, at this time, Consent Calendar Public Hearings Items 8A through B is closed. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 8A and B.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Madam Clerk, I'm not seeing any of the requests. Councilmember Smith, I see that you attempted to. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we approved pavement rehabilitation on Buena Vista Road for three point three million dollars. And we had some constituents come up and talk about bicycle safety and commuting and our pedestrian bicycle deaths, which we continue to try to address. A question was asked the other day about, you know, how much is the green paint? And so I had staff split that out from this particular project. And of the three point three million dollars, about two percent of it is the green paint. So seventy thousand dollars to hopefully save some lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we approved some dollars going towards a new sign that will adorn our auto mall. And I wanted to thank my fellow councilmembers as well as staff for spending the time to collaborate, not only with our consultants, but especially our constituents, our Auto Dealers Association. And Greg, thank you to your staff as well and everyone involved in the process. I think this is an important first step in making sure that we both beautify our, one of our largest kind of economic contributors to the money that helps run our city. And so I wanted to just give a quick shout out and many thanks and appreciation for the efforts going towards our auto mall and the love going towards Ward Seven and the work that's to come there as well. And I wanted to thank the Auto Dealers Association for all of their collaboration and always being great partners with the city. And a second shout out goes definitely to our governor's office in coming out with a ten-point plan and beautifying our Bakersfield. And that love feels very good coming down the Southern Central Valley. So again, want to thank all of, you know, folks on our council, our mayor, as well as our city staff who have been great advocates for the city of Bakersfield because this doesn't happen by accident. It happens with very deliberate partnerships and being just strong advocates for our city and our community. And I think this is just the beginning of something very, very strong, very powerful, and very beautiful. Thank you, guys. Have a great rest of your week.
Thank you, Councilmember Core. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, since we were talking about green paint, it triggered a thought. The first, one of the first projects we did of the bike lanes was at Grand Lakes and Ming Avenue, where we went south, maybe half a mile, I'm not sure. Not a long section, and it's great. It looks good. However, if we simply go north about a quarter mile, it leads to the elementary school. And I think if we had to do over again, we probably would have said, let's do the one that takes the kids to the elementary school who ride their bikes. And all of the homes that have the kids are north of Ming that feed into Grand Lakes there. South of Ming is very, very large homes with older people and very few young kids. So I'm just wondering if we can find a few extra buckets of green paint at some point here. It looks like a half a project. It looks like we stopped halfway on this project. It looks like we stopped halfway on this project when the north leads you to the elementary school, which is where the bike lane really should be, and all the kids feed into that north of Ming from all the homes that have the kids in them. So my request is that we put that on the list of one of the first next projects. I don't know if we're done with grants or how we're doing, but it'd be nice to put that on the list of one we ought to do when funds become available, just kind of complete the Grand Lakes project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The city recently completed a Bakersfield parking study that the Planning and Development Committee reviewed, and I had an opportunity to also review as it relates to downtown. You know, downtown is, is experiencing a long-term revitalization, and it's, it's an iterative process, right? There's a lot of different pieces and components that are required for us to continue to propel the downtown core in the future, and ongoing investment from the city is required, along with, of course, private investment. But one of those investments is our public parking structure on 18th and I, and I think that there are ways in which we can improve the functionality and actually improve the number of folks who actually use that facility. There are 502 slots available in the parking garage on 18th and I, 171 are reserved for city fleet vehicles. And so the balance are used nights and weekends, other times a day by members of the public. But I think there are ways in which we can improve the parking structure and also our on-street parking. And so I'd like to make a referral tonight that the city takes steps to create a parking enterprise fund, that we move the parking garage under the enterprise fund, and then begin looking at ways in which we can better manage that parking structure, even including hiring a private firm to manage the parking garage, and looking at new technology. I mean, I'll give you one example, the gate, the parking gate serves us well, but it's also been vandalized time and time and time again. Well, there's plenty of new technology out there that doesn't even require a gate, reads your license plate, user can go in, pay, and won't even have to, won't even have to fiddle around with a machine. And so there are, there are so many advancements when it comes to parking management that I think we need to take advantage of as it relates to this particular parking garage. And then the second piece to all of this is that we work with existing parking structure owners, the county, Kern County Super Tennis Schools, even private, private owners, that we have a joint use agreement so that when they are no longer using their facility, like, you know, nights and weekends, that we have an agreement for the city to utilize that parking structure, those parking structures for public use. That adds capacity right away. So the more that we can do to think really innovatively and sort of from a business lens, think through how we can actually increase utilization of the parking structure, the better off downtown is. And so I think the first step, though, is to get this moving towards an enterprise fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias.
I'm not sure if the vice mayor read my mind, but I also, tonight, want to make a referral about parking as well, particularly as it relates to the downtown parking structure. It's come to my attention from a couple of actual coworkers and folks who occupy the Bakersfield Californian Building during the day, that our current electric vehicle infrastructure is actually rather cost prohibitive, so that if anybody's working, you know, a six, seven, eight-hour shift, they may have to return back to the parking structure to remove the pump from their vehicle, because it's my understanding that after four or five hours, that it then becomes $5 each hour thereafter. So they could end up with a pretty sizable bill by the end of the, the working day. So I, I'm not sure what the cost comparison is, so I just want to ask, you know, city staff to maybe take a look at that, see if we can put together some cost comparisons to other cities and what they charge. Obviously, we continue to double down on our efforts to continue to build out electric vehicle infrastructure throughout the city, so I just want to make sure that so long as we're building them, that they're being used. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We're approaching the Memorial Day weekend, a time when we remember those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. So let's take time to honor them, their ceremonies at National, at Union, at Green Lawn, and other places. The Hillcrest ceremony will not be taking place this year, but let's make sure that we express our gratitude to the families and remember all of those who have given everything for our country. With that, we stand adjourned at 6:12.